Got the mics up.
Waiting for the light.
We're ready to go live. We're ready to go live.
Okay, this is the time set for the October meeting of the Board of Directors of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District. All Board members are present. Any Board member want any item on the consent agenda removed for discussion? All those in favor of passing the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is passed. Comments, this is the time for comments from citizens present on both agenda and non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the district's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the Board will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a Board member may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The Chair has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. Alrighty, so Mitch Moore has signed up to speak. Mitch?
I live at 2929 Northeast Loop Drive. I missed you last month, but I watched you on TV. It was quite a meeting. I'm here tonight as a representative of the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association. In February, we introduced you to the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association. There's a few members here tonight. I'm happy to report that since that time, the Association has held several well-attended meetings in the Driftwood Library as well as Faith Baptist Church. And the great news is we're going, growing at a rapid rate. We've received membership declarations from hundreds of residents in the neighborhood. In our meetings, a consistent theme is the expression by our membership of a genuine concern for the lake and a willingness to help. I've been before you on several occasions this year to discuss how residents of the neighborhood are supportive of a majority of the projects contained in the Devils Lake Plan. While we've offered our help on several occasions, we have never been contacted by the district or the Board of Directors to date. So I'm here again tonight to offer the assistance of the Neighborhood Association. The Save Our Shoreline program is an example of our offer to help the district achieve goals. During last month's meeting, the Board engaged in quite a discussion about the Save Our Shoreline program, even considering raising the potential award to $1,500 to encourage participation. We have a list of several homeowners who wish to make shoreline improvements to their property, but our research indicates that there are a variety of issues that have prevented the initiation of these projects. So we would propose the district consider a few minor modifications to the SOS program that might be more acceptable to a broader base of lakefront owners. So we would suggest that you schedule a lakeside meeting with a few of these interested parties to learn firsthand about some of the obstacles or roadblocks that have been a problem for the program, and the Neighborhood Association would be happy to organize these meetings. The rhetoric and relationships between the district and the community has been strained at times in the past several years, and so we created the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association in hopes to relieve some of the pressure that exists. Recently, the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association appeared before City Council to help define the process of creating neighborhood associations in Lincoln City. In that meeting, the Water Board Chair spoke against the members of Devils Lake Neighborhood Association, and we're not entirely sure why, but our response is to come here before you tonight again and stress that we want to create a cooperative environment that's beneficial to the neighborhood and to the lake. So tonight, we offer a new path, one that directly engages the public in the mission of the district. We're recommending that the Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board and the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association Board come together in a workshop to engage in a two-way dialogue about ways that we can move forward as a team and not adversaries. You may contact me directly to schedule this important meeting, and thank you for your time. We look forward to this productive meeting.
Thanks Mitch.
Thank you Mitch. Mark Christie.
My name's Mark Christie, and I have a residence at 3184 Northeast Loop Drive. I'm also tonight here as a representative of the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association. My message tonight is similar to what you heard from Mitch. We want you to know that there are many areas that we are willing to help. Here are a few more examples. In the past 18 months, the district is focused a lot on, have attention toward the potential extending sewer services around the lake. The members of DLNA are generally supportive of exploring the idea of expanding sewers around the lake. In fact, I have yet to hear anyone speak out against such a project. We must all recognize that this is a complex issue that involves detailed engineering, private right-of-ways, extensive underground construction, taxation, and eventual annexation. In the spirit of improving the chances of a positive outcome, we feel a DLNA representative should be at the table as this idea moves forward. Within our membership, we have individuals that have decades of experience in right-of-way acquisition, utility construction and operation, and residential and commercial development that are willing to lend their expertise. Six years ago, the district established septic tank inspections as its number-one priority for the lake. Unfortunately, to date, there have been zero inspections performed as a result of this program. Indeed, as of today, this program has been put aside in deference to the potential of sewers. This is a program that has been universally supported in the neighborhood. It has languished because the district has made perfect the enemy of good with standards and expectations that are difficult to obtain. The DLNA has developed a voluntary septic program, inspection program designed on the DEQ Septic Smart Program as well as the DEQ Inspection Guidelines. The Lincoln County On-Site Waste Management Division has agreed to participate in the record-keeping portion of this voluntary program. Our program has been introduced to the real estate community throughout Lincoln County. We have requested their cooperation, particularly encouraging pre-listing of existing septics on and around the lake. We would propose the voluntary septic inspection process be adopted by the DLWID for home sites outside the city and within the UGB to begin January of 2015. The district should continue to work with the City of Lincoln City to establish an inspection program within the city based on the same DEQ inspection guidelines. The neighborhood is thrilled that the Board responded to input supplied at the public workshop on lake level and began investigating aeration for the lake. I can declare that DLNA is 100% supportive of the RFP for aeration based on the receipt of a minimum of three qualified bidders. We would suggest that each bidder be invited to a public workshop and interview process for possible adoption. Indeed, to help expedite the important project, the DLNA engaged a lake contractor this summer to collect data related to the material at the bottom of the lake from a series of core samples. These samples have been chemically analyzed, and our data could be shared with the final candidates to help them better understand, forecast the results for their proposed solution. As with searing, we must recognize that this is also a complex issue that involves detailed engineering and very likely private right-of-ways. We have shown that we are committed to moving the process forward and like to offer a DLNA representative to participate in the project and act as a conduit to property owners whose land will very likely require, be required for sitting of air compressors, power lines, and air hoses around the lake. As you can see, there are many areas we can work together. This could best be initiated by the workshop format previously requested, one where the DLWID Board and the DLNA Board discuss ways we can move forward as a team for the good of the lake and the neighborhood that it surrounds. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Mark.
Thank you Mark.
Thanks Mark.
That's all we have signed up. Does anybody else wish to come forward and speak? Miles.
I live at 1192 Northeast Lake Drive in Lincoln City, and my lake is still green and icky. And there has been no discussion of, one of my points that I presented to you in April at a contentious meeting, and I'd like some discussion of it. I know you are going ahead with the aeration study or thinking about it, and I appreciate that, but the second half of my concern was the Devils Lake River which runs to the ocean, and it doesn't run to the ocean because there's so much sand in the river channel that you can walk across it from north to south. And I would like to see Paul be charged with discussing a gate that can be designed to empty out the D River and then close it up when it has to be closed for lake level. And I'm sure you all realize that the weather is changing, or has changed. We didn't reach 953 this year, and it's going to be a dry winter again. And the floodgate should be installed and modernized because that cement abutment certainly doesn't help the lake clean itself out periodically, which a gate would do, and we should at least have some idea of whether it is possible or not. So I am asking you again as a Board to discuss it and give some thought to spending a couple hours with the Army Corps of Engineers to see what the cost is perhaps, rough idea, and a rough idea of the feasibility of it. So, thank you, and we'll be done.
Miles. Just kind of an update. Paul and Randy and I, I recirculated your ideas, and we spent a considerable amount of time, what, a week ago or so? Going over that area and talking about different things, including yours, on the feasibility and how it would have to be managed. And so, we certainly haven't ignored it.
I appreciate that. It hasn't been discussed though in an open meeting here.
I'm gonna bring a little bit of information forward, some ideas that I have tonight, but this is public comment time, so I don't think this is appropriate right now. We planned on talking about it in new business tonight, Miles. In the new business section, planned on bringing it up and discussing some ideas that we were throwing around this last couple of weeks. So I hope you can stick around for it.
I hope so, but my sleep has been limited this week. I woke up at, or I went to bed about 1:00 o'clock the last two mornings.
Alright, anyone else wish to come forward and speak? Well, there's a question that says, "Do you wish to provide a public comment to the Board?" And didn't mark it, so.
My name's Richard Danielson. I've lived here since 1959, grew up on and around the lake, have witnessed everything that's gone on, and was very opinionated on the negative side when the grass carp was pushed for the first planting, when the dam was built, and I've just watched it deteriorate from that day forward. There's no doubt that there was issues with the lake. There's been issues with the lake since the 40s. It was recorded in history, and it hasn't improved. You guys have a statement that you've made. Devils Lake Water Improvement District was established in 86 for the restoration, maintenance, enhancement of the lake. The district's existence is supported by a tax base voted by the public. Each year, the district forms its budget to accomplish these goals. The district's goals are the following: Improve and maintain quality of the lake; Improve the environment for fish, wildlife, and humans of the lake and its watershed; Improve recreational opportunities on Devils Lake; Improve and maintain safe, efficient navigation through Devils Lake; Increase public access to Devils Lake; Improve the economy of North Lincoln County through the restoration and maintenance of Devils Lake; And increase public awareness and public education of Devils Lake. I think you got one out of, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, one out of seven, and that's increased public awareness, although the education part, I don't know if I think you're lacking there. I think you get an F on all of those above. Now, I witnessed the planting of the first batch of carp. The construction of D River Dam was a vocal opponent of both. Here's a straight dope you don't want to hear. Most septic systems around the lake were installed many years back before the dam's installation. The lake would rise in those days and do a bit of flooding, but flooding only lasted a few days at a time. The septic leach fields that were installed back then, with lower lake levels in mind, were mostly functioning properly. The installing of the dam raised the lake level, so lake water now saturates the leach fields. What was once mostly dry ground for months on end, if not year-long, is now saturated and pollutes our lake year-long. Blue-green algae are the results as well as E. coli. The lake has been posted as a health hazard because of this pollution. People are not using the lake for swimming or water contact uses. The value of lakeside property has surely declined because of pollution. The lake always was a safe place to swim and recreate as well as boating activities pre-dam. The first step to turn this around: Remove the dam in its entirety. Dredge from 101 Bridge inland 100 yards or so and lower the lake level so as to stop the unnatural flooding of old and failing leach fields. This would be cheap and only the first step in the process of restoring the lake to a healthy and enjoyable body of water. Property values would improve. Modification to a few docks may be necessary, but the public would be better served in the long term. Grass carp as well as all carp root to feed, stirring up the toxic nutrients from the bottom, muddy bottom. Over 32,000 Chinese grass carp have been planted in three different years with the blessing and request of Devils Lake Water Improvement District. A dam was installed which was designed to pin these carp and later was redesigned to impound the lake level. The carp are now well over 25 to 40 pounds each and are said to eat their own body weight daily. That's a lot of rooting and wastes of the carp. The stirring up the nutrient-rich mud and the carp's own waste adds to the nitrogen phosphates that create blue-green algae. Aриating the dam brings up a column of water from the bottom. It's a four-foot-deep dam. Aриating the lake, it's a four-foot-deep water table you're working with. You're not gonna go ariate the middle of the lake, you're gonna be in four feet of water. That thing's gonna be a foot above the water, probably even lower. It's gonna lift all the nutrients off the bottom on a 100% 24/7 basis. Those grass carp feeding, they don't have nothing to feed on. Why would you even want to consider putting more grass carp in? All they do is go to the bottom. I asked him if I could play a 30-second video on YouTube to show a grass carp feeding in the muck, and you'll see what the grass carp do. You wanna see it? Google rooting carp.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson.
Thank you, Richard.
Any of them, and you've had thousands of dollars to do them. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak? Any Board comments? Unfinished business, Devils Lake Plan, septic and sewer.
Mr. Chair. It came to my attention that, I don't know if you got a motion and a second on the consent agenda, if you want to just back up and get that. And then also, there's a resolution associated with the financial report that I'd like to bring up either quickly, in that financial, or address it in new business, but we need to look at that as well.
We did approve the consent agenda by motion.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I was gonna bring up the resolution at new business, but...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got a note to do that, Paul. Alright, unfinished business, Devils Lake Plan, septic and sewer.
Okay, so...
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, pretty short turnaround from the last meeting. You know, there's, this is a long-term project, obviously. We don't really have any updates per se right now, but there are a number of things that we're still working on getting a septic tank inspection ordinance. Our goal is for, basically New Year's Eve, that was the city manager's goal as well, so that's really the entity that would have that. And then there's the buildable lands inventory that we've talked about for the urban growth management plan. And then really, the major thing, and this is, we announced last meeting, is that sewer master plan update is expected by April 2015. That's, will change the method of allowing sewer on the east side effectively, and so that's good news on that end, so just as a reminder of that.
Yeah, just for a brief update, I mean, the city's investing, I think it's $50,000 into that, into the update, basically to the update of the sewer master plan for the low-pressure type of system that we're gonna use in the LID and that makes it financially feasible, or at least more feasible, to sewer the lake.
And I would point out, just for the public comment relative to participation in any of these, the septics or the sewers, there's really opportunity through the city as well. I mean, I think that's, end of the day, that's where these things happen, and so I'd encourage anybody, and particularly the Neighborhood Association, to look to that as well as a means to participate, so you'll have, you want to stay in connection with the city.
Alright, with respect to the Voyage, the Voyage Lake Drive, 15th Street, LID project, I have had another conversation with the engineer and the contract engineer, and he sounds much more certain that actually the Lake Cove Drive area will be included, so it looks like we're back on schedule for the entire project instead of a slightly scaled-down project from approximately 60 home sites to 45 or so. So, that's what I know. He told me he was about ready to stamp the drawings, but there was, of course, one more thing that had to be taken care of, so that's what I know about the progress on the LID. He said he did tell me that because the actual construction period is short enough that they're not really concerned about waiting until next summer to do it, that if they see a window of a few days of decent weather, which is, you know, may not be a likely event in the wintertime, but if they do see a window of a few days and they're ready to go, they will initiate installation of the lines at that time without waiting to summer. Alright, Save Our Shoreline.
So, just briefly, we did get an interested party coming forward, so we've got, and I've been working with a different landscaper to help look at a project there, and it's one that really fits our program, and I think that's important. The program is kind of limited in the respect that, you know, it's, you know, $750 basically per parcel is what we're kind of top-doubt on for the district's contribution. That doesn't allow a big engineering feat for some rock wall that's failed. You know, those type of things are really beyond the scope of what this program was designed for, but this one, which is a nice seed for, you know, other properties that are similar, you know, is just basically grass all the way to a wall, and we're just really gonna be looking at replacing the grass with some native vegetation. So that's really what we kind of shot for with our program, and, you know, so this one, I think, is certainly an opportunity. It may be big enough, though, to warrant more expenditure, and I think that's kind of what we were talking about last time, is if there's something that's bigger and more, you know, worthy of more money, I think that that's, you know, a potential. I don't have a dollar figure to suggest, yeah, we should go to 1,500 or anything like that, because we have to develop that, but would hope to at least get, you know, part of that program, and maybe it becomes two phases and there's a second side of it where it gets expanded if it need be, so. But hopefully even by November, that one, we can get done, so.
And why don't we, heard that there's several folks apparently that are interested in the project, and at least would like to discuss this, why don't we, why don't we contact them? Have a meeting with them, either, I don't know if you want to do one-on-one or with them as a group or what, but...
Well, yeah, any individual is welcome to contact us. I mean, it's really a property-by-property process, or has been. You know, if there's people that are, that want to get together to learn more about the program, we can certainly have a larger, you know, sit-down, four, five, 10, 20 people, whatever, you know, would want to, you know, come and learn more about the program, but when the rubber hits the road, it really gets down to what the parcel looks like and if our project can, if our program can work in their parcel, and that's kind of only told after we've, you know, done a site visit.
Okay, well, I mean, for starters, let's get the names and contact information from Mitch Moore.
Okay.
And then contact these people and see if they're interested in going forward and how they're interested in going forward.
And the other thing is, is, you know, we've got this big outreach campaign going right now, and so we expect to, you know, garnish quite a bit more interest, and that's gonna be happening, I think Abel will report. Do you want to just tell us what your timeline expectation is on that? Just give us a quick, two-minute?
Yep. So, we have picked up all of the flyers and door hangers, so those are all ready to be handed out. We have the seed packets made, and the last thing we're waiting on is live plants. So, once we get those in, which we're expecting within...
Hopefully this week.
Hopefully this week or next week, then we are ready to start going around to lake property owners and seeing if they're interested in the program. You know, Kent offered to lend some of his valuable time to help us go door-to-door and visit with homeowners, and there's one person at the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council who has also offered to help out, so fingers crossed that works out. It's been dry, so that's, we're waiting for the rain to pick up a little bit, and it'll be better for the sites to start planting. So, cyclones moving along fine, should be going around in the next couple of weeks or so, weather permitting.
And then one other thing that happened just this last week, the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council has offered to help build our inventory of nursery plants. You know, we have opportunity to access plants through the BLM, however, unless we have projects, it's kind of... it's kind of a, you know, chicken/egg thing, you know, we don't want to say, oh, we need 100, we need 1,000 plants, and then they just sit there all winter long, or all summer long, and every year planted, and we just have to maintain them. So, but that effort is also happening on, you know, frankly, on your behalf, from the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council, they're going to try to start to generate some seeds and some stock for that nursery, so there'll be more plants available for projects. Probably not like this winter-type projects, but certainly, again, for the, you know, on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, great, well, I just want to follow up on the expression of interest of specific people that we apparently now have, so do that, and, and maybe they'd be the first ones that we get the new information to. Okay. Vegetation management.
So this is your grass carp application, you know, it's been submitted, as you know, there's no update to provide you at this time, but it's certainly in the queue for their agenda, they're well aware of your application, and it's moving through their process.
Communications report.
So just want to touch on, really, two items. Going to be actually giving a presentation in front of the Kiwanis, same one that we gave in front of the chamber, October 23rd at Surfheads. I think the Kiwanis is a pretty, you know, open environment, I think you can certainly get an invite to attend, and the public might, if the public's interested in doing so, I would contact one of your fellow Kiwanians, if people want to get, I know there were people that weren't chamber members that came to the chamber talk that we gave last week, and so thank you for the people that did attend to that. The other item I just want to mention is outreach thing that we're doing next Tuesday at Chinook Winds, it's the senior fair, and that runs from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we'll have a booth there, and encourage, you know, board participation, certainly we'll have it staffed, but it would be great to have additional boards, board members come through, and if you can, fit that into your schedule, October 7th, which is Tuesday, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Chinook Winds.
Can you find us, Paul?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, and your safety report speaks for itself in the, in your report. In the mid-coast TMDL, we basically have no update there.
Yeah, there hasn't been a meeting since your last one.
Same with respect to East Devils Lake Road? The policy updates, we're ready now to review the investment policy draft. Are we not?
I think so, I mean, that was the goal.
Pull it up, Paul.
I could do. Do you want to do it that way, or?
All right, I mean, I would just say that my concerns were addressed by the, by the last draft, since, when, almost nine months ago.
Okay, so, yeah, the comments that the board had at the time was to basically change the, just kind of way down here, you know, who effectively has delegated the authority to invest on your behalf, and instead of having it just be the treasurer, the idea was to have it be, the board of directors would make that decision. And so, that kind of, you know, gets around the issue of, you know, having just one person in charge of your funds, you're the ones that are in charge of your funds collectively. And then, the other comment that I had originally was the reporting. So, you know, basically, the reporting that you have already is consistent with your needs, you know, it, the investments that you have are consistent, in my estimation, to the needs of what this might suggest you would want, and then, but should that change, and you had, like, you're really going to have an investment strategy, or you're going to have somebody invest your portfolio, and I just don't see that as being the case, you know, it's, but if that were to be the case, then you would have, you know, you'd have to delegate somebody to be that investment officer, again, and that would be a pretty arduous, rigorous role, and I don't know how much value you'd get out of it. I mean, obviously, if you had a really good investor, and they know what they're doing, yeah, you know, that's, that would be worth maybe having a professional portfolio manager, but I don't suspect that that's going to be what you're going to be wanting to do, so that was just really kind of looking at, you know, maybe just changing language, you know, that it's, you know, instead of the investment officer should prepare a report, you know, that's kind of the original draft, you know, it would just be like, you have, you know, should you take on a portfolio management, active portfolio management strategy, then the investment officer, as so delegated, would do these type of things. That's kind of what I would recommend, you know, you don't want something that suggests that you're going to do something that you're not planning on doing, I guess, in your policy. Be my thought.
So does anybody have any suggestions or revisions to this draft?
I don't have any.
Well, I'll move that we adopt the investment policy as expressed in this latest draft.
One second.
Would that be with the kind of verbal, kind of ad that I just gave, as far as, like, the if/then kind of statement relative to, if you are to do the portfolio change, then you would invoke these higher kind of levels of strategies? Just to make it a little clearer, just, there's some language, I think, that needs just to be changed, because, again, this was an SDAO draft that we're working from.
I don't have that.
I gotta take this. Let me turn that off, sorry.
Would that be reasonable? I mean, that's kind of what I think, because, you know...
Well, I guess it would make it clearer, yeah, but, fine.
Okay.
Language to that effect, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
So your motion includes that?
It does. It includes the authority to make the revision that Paul just elucidated. So we had a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so the Aeration Project, RFP, how's that coming?
So, we're still working on getting a draft together for you, and, you know, we will do that in the next couple of weeks, anticipated. I did hear back from, you know, as far as additional scoping, the Department of State Lands, which is the big one with your easement question, yesterday, they submitted a new staff, you know, structure, so they have created a, like, new positions, and unfortunately, Lincoln County's, for the proprietary end of their side of, which is the easement side, has a vacancy. So I've further contacted them, found who they feel is the most, you know, the best person to be working with, and so we have somebody that, you know, won't be the permanent person in that position, but is a, I think, you know, well-versed staff member in their organization to at least continue that dialogue, because the first person we went to said, try this person, and we tried that person, never heard back from them, and now we're at stage three. So, that's, that's what I can report on that. DEQ met with them yesterday, and they actually have a staff meeting, except for, I think, next Tuesday, or the following Tuesday, I don't recall, where they're going to float your, you know, kind of scoped proposal out to their, you know, within their own structure, and see if there are questions that they have, that they'll need permitting, or questions or other things, other than what we brought up last time. So, that's what I can report for you.
So, Paul, can we decide, freshen my memory, we decide to go with time and materials if we need assistance with permitting?
Yes.
Is that still what you're thinking is the best?
Yes, yeah.
So I guess the only thing I would have is, you know, reach out to Mark and see if they'll share the core data that they have from their sampling this summer, see if it's helpful for the RFP process.
Okay, will do.
Yeah, I mean, that, well, without knowing what it is, I suspect it would be helpful, so it'd be great to have. And, you know, it sure would be great if we could have, be in the position to start an installation in March or April. I know that depends heavily on certain governmental agencies, and not just the contractors, but I'd suggest let's move forward on the contractor's side as quickly as we can, and makes, I think it brings more pressure to bear on the public agencies if we have a concrete proposal that we want to initiate, that is only being blocked or stalled by their, you know, awaiting their input and decisions, and, and then, you know, we just need to bring this DSL lease, leasing cost thing to a head. So, I'm convinced that at some point, we can bring whatever their charges are to a level that we can handle, but it's going to, you know, who knows what that's going to take? I mean, including, you know, going all the way to the governor's office, so we might as well push it as hard as we can, as fast as we can, and...
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Water quality update.
Okay, just to announce that the Harm Fall Bloom Contact, Water Contact Advisory is still in effect, you know, I was out there just yesterday, you know, looking at the lake, kind of passer, passing around the lake, and, you know, certainly there's blooms out there, part of the lake, you know, depending on which side the wind's blowing towards, pretty impacted, you know, like, say, Holmes Road yesterday was, you know, green as can be, carpet green, and we've actually had basically another bloom start again, so it's, you know, it's not just the same species out there that we had, say, in May, that started and came down, or June is starting, it's actually another species, actually, again, that's kind of dominant, at least in that shoreline sample site. There's other parts of the lake that has the same stuff that we had, say, last month, you know, microcystis bloom, et cetera. So, you know, these are just organisms that are utilizing nutrients, that are utilizing sunlight, and photosynthesizing and growing, you know, and it's really, unfortunately, that simple in a lot of ways.
So, Paul, do you think that two and a half inches of rain in one day, just to the real flush and dump into, off the landscape, like, because it seemed like the bloom kind of started picking up almost immediately after, after that event?
Nutrients coming through with those, is that what you're alluding to? Yeah, absolutely, you know, rainwater, pretty low nutrient level, you know, as it's falling out of the sky, hits the landscape, picks up whatever's coming through, and, you know, if you've got, you know, a dog waste that's been on your property for all summer long, that's coming down the hill soon, you know, if you've got septic leachate that's been on your property for, you know, three months without rain, and just been kind of, you know, in a functioning septic system, again, now, you know, mindful, that's going to potentially come be pushing through too, certainly, as it, you know, migrates to the water table. So, yeah, you know, runoff and storm events, and rain are good for, or rain is good for the lake, but, you know, runoff and the other things associated with impaired landscape are not.
Um, yeah, I should bring up that one byproduct of sewer-ing the lake, not just to eliminate nutrient, external loading, you know, from sources outside the lake, of nutrients, but it, well, in our LID, part of the engineering process has been to develop and design three bioswales for stormwater runoff, because, I mean, you know, stormwater runoff doesn't come every place equally, it tends to channel in certain areas and then come into the lake, and so, you know, if this is a little microcosm for what we can do around the lake, we're going to be able to treat a lot of, I don't know what, I can't tell you what percentage, but the main runoff areas from our LID area will be, will be, the largest runoff areas will be run through a bioswale that can't help but subtract some of the nutrients from the flow into the lake. So, that's a potential benefit, lake-wide, for sewer-ing the lake, lake-wide.
So, I wanted to show part of the staff report to the public, because it's, I think it's important to get this out there. This is something that our intern developed, and it's a, hang on here. So, this is a, just kind of a figure chart we've been using in our water quality postings lately, you may have seen this, and it's really just trying to provide some guidance to the general public and users of the lake about one toxin that we're talking about, that we monitor, microcystin, there are others, and that's part of the proviso about this information, is this doesn't mean that the lake is fine, and you, as long as you don't drink it, because you have a toxin level of this, and you're okay, because there could be other toxins there. But just to get a little bit of a scaling and appreciation, I think, of what we're talking about as far as consumption of, say, lake water, and you might consume lake water by swimming and, you know, inhaling it, and et cetera. So, I really like this, and I applaud Ava's work on this, and we had some input from the state as well on this, to just, you know, make sure we're right on the right track, but if you take, you know, this 220-pound individual, right, 100 kilograms, you know, shown here, and if you're at the drinking water standard, which is one part per billion, again, not only for the microcystin toxin that we're talking about, you're basically able to consume 16 cups of water, and still be within the safe level, which is four liters for the metric side, so basically a gallon of water. If it's, and this kind of will help make sense, I think, if it's 10 times higher value of toxin out there, 10 parts per billion, which is the recreational standard, well, then you might think, yeah, you could do about one-tenth of that, and that is about what, you know, what you see here, as you go from four liters to .4 liters, or two cups, and these are rounded, the cups are rounded. And then if it's, you know, 100 times the drinking water standard, which we see, we've seen that, that level of toxin out in the lake, you know, 100 parts per billion, then you're talking a few tablespoons, three tablespoons, so that's, you know, in a very short term, time, face plant, basically, off of a, you know, a water skiing or something, you could consume three tablespoons of water pretty quick. If it was at 100 parts per billion... If it was at 100 parts per billion, you would have just hit your threshold as to what the, you know, daily safe intake might be thought to be. Now, we did this for different sized individuals, 120-pounder, 33-pound person, and even a 35-pound dog. And the reason we did the dog is because the state actually has a separate guideline for dogs because of their high use of water bodies, their swimming in it, their lick in their fur. And the recreational guideline for dogs is actually below the drinking water standard. So, it's a very conservative number. So, if they're out in the lake and it's at 10 parts per billion, well, that's just a quarter cup of lapping up a quarter cup of water. That happens pretty quick. At 100 parts per billion, it's a teaspoon, right? You know, just a teaspoon of 100 parts per billion, and that's your daily take. If you did two teaspoons, you'd be twice your daily intake. And that's, what the daily intake is, hopes to achieve is, you know, what you're, basically your body can process before it, you know, becomes toxic to you. Your liver detoxifies things, okay, yeah, up to an extent. If you overload it, then you've exceeded your toxicity daily limit, and that's what the numbers indicate. So, you know, I think this tries to scale it for people, and we have this on our website and on the water quality page, and I just wanted to point it out. And again, you know, these are just calculations, and again, it's just on one toxin, you know, there are potentially others out there. The new bloom that we, that's talking about today, that's an antotoxin producer predominantly. That's, I mean, it produces microcystis as well, but it produces antotoxin. And antotoxin has a different standard than the microcystis. So, it's a lot of information, and, you know, it's very complicated, but this, I hopefully at least provides some, kind of a way to look at it, you know, at least at some level. So, I just wanted to point that out.
I was gonna say, Paul, I mean, this is great. I mean, looking at those intakes and how they would affect us, I guess the other part of it is that, you know, we have all the time out in our lake. They do in all the other lakes that are under harmful algal blooms and everything else. According to the Oregon Health Authority, I mean, we never see in the news that someone is affected because of a harmful algal bloom. We do see it because of E. coli. It becomes, you know, common knowledge, and it's on, you know, the lead story for all the news channels and everything. But my knowledge, we've never, I've never heard of the news carrying anything of a harmful algal bloom. And so, I guess in your research from the Oregon Health Authority, what doctors are treating people, harmful algal bloom exposure, and, you know, we haven't heard of any. Have you? I mean, did you find anything in your research there from them, Ava or Paul?
Well, I don't, you know, certainly, that's not something that I have direct access to. They, we could seek that question. But the good thing about this is, and I think why you get, frankly, you're not getting humans that are reporting, a couple of things. First off, likely underreported, frankly. You know, water impacts like such of these could just be diarrhea, flu symptoms, things like that, likely underreported. So, that's, that may speak to the reality out there that may actually exist that we don't know about. The other thing, the main thing, I think, though, is that I think these advisories are done in a way that protect the public health, and that's the goal. The values are done, made conservatively. The idea is to protect the public health, is not to just barely protect the public health, but to protect the public health. So, these numbers are actually based on epidemiological work that takes a host species, like an animal, basically find out what the lethal level or impactful level is on that animal. You do a tenfold, so if, say, that number is 100, or say that number is one, you know, whatever, it's one, the concentration is one of something. You take that, you multiply it by 10 for interspecies variability, then you multiply it by 10 again for intraspecies variability. So, you and I are a little different, I'm more susceptible, you're not. So, that's the intraspecies variability. And then by 10 again because of the lack of solid knowledge, just from the uncertainty of the data set. So, there's a thousand-fold difference between what might have had the harm on, say, that rat in the laboratory and the values that they use for protecting public health.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying is...
So, it's a good, that's why...
We haven't heard anything of, and, I mean, we have, I know that some of the board members participate in water activities when, a warning and everything. I mean, we haven't had those incidents of illness or anything else.
I think Paul touched on why we haven't seen that, is because of the thousand-fold, it's 10, it's 10, it's 10. I mean, instead of looking at 10 parts per million, we'd be looking at 10,000 parts per million. Am I correct?
Yeah.
If, to get to that lethal stage where that rat died.
Yeah.
But 10,000 parts per million, you're drinking two cups, yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna maybe croak or...
My recollection over the last few years, that at least three dogs have died.
But not here.
Here, yes. Yeah, here.
Well, we're talking humans, not dogs right now, but I mean, I think dog, I'm not...
Oh, okay, if you don't like animals, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it's obvious that pets are more susceptible.
Yeah.
Especially because of their behaviors and stuff.
I think that there is the reason why we don't see issues with humans and cyanobacteria toxins, because of the redundancy factor, which is a good thing, but yet I struggle with this constantly because we put out warnings all the time when we're at 15 or 20. And people play over the lake and never hear a thing, and, you know, probably know that it's really not an issue unless you're down there drinking a couple gallons of water. So, I have a real hard time with, I struggle with this a lot. I've talked to Paul about it, I've talked to Kip, and I struggle with this a lot because, you know, one of our jobs is promote this lake. And we put out, we put out news that pretty much does the opposite. So, this is a struggle that I have as far as, you know, sitting as a board member, so... Not being said, make the advice, make the threshold...
I understand that.
Or nothing. God help us if we made, hey, you know, if it was, you know, still okay and somebody didn't.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we...
No, I understand.
I don't think any of us would sit well.
Well, it's just in the news all the time, and we're putting out warnings and, but we're not seeing... Uh-oh, better stay out. Many people that either aware of the warnings or ignore them, that if it were extremely toxic situation, see that, people would be affected. But E. coli, that's a story, certainly, I'm glad. Something that's monitored closely and so, just to comment.
Yeah, let's be very clear that none of the recent publicity about the, really, you know, the death that occurred from E. coli, there's no indication that any of those people had any contact with Devil's Lake. So, let's be clear about that.
Right. Yeah, and to, Kip, you're, I don't, I haven't heard of any dog deaths in Lincoln County associated with Devil's Lake either. I've heard of illnesses of dogs, but to my knowledge, you know, statewide, that's a different story.
Yeah, I, well, I'm not gonna belabor it, but I seem to remember specifically a dog death here, year and a half, two years ago.
We did have a dog death, it wasn't associated with harmful algal blooms, it was associated with, I'm trying to think...
Poisonous plant.
Yeah, poisonous plant. Water hemlock, I think it is. It's very common, and it, yeah, did sicken and kill a dog, and then sickened, nearly killed some, the owner's second dog the next week.
Yeah, maybe that's what I was remembering.
Yeah. And we actually did, were called in to help...
Correct.
With that investigation. And, you know, it was a time when there wasn't a bloom on the lake, and so, you know, that was pretty fair indication that it wasn't associated with toxins from, you know, harmful algal blooms. But of the biotoxins in the world, you know, certainly this one that we're talking about with the canine was very problematic. But other biotoxins, microcystis, antotoxin, the ones that come from cyanobacteria, there's some of them the strongest. And so, that's, again, I think, part of the reality in, of getting so much awareness around this issue.
About once, maybe once every two or three weeks, I call to the two vets in town and ask if there's been any sicknesses, and if there have been dogs or any other animals swimming and that have come in with maladies, and it's been all clear. So, nothing to report on that end.
Well, I think one of the differences too between dogs and humans is dogs drink quite a bit of water weight, percentage of water for their weight out of the lake. And fortunately, humans don't clean themselves with their tongue, their fur, which is, can get saturated with algae.
Yeah.
Get heavy concentrations that way.
All right, do we have any further staff reporting on harmful algae blooms?
Nothing on the algae. I just wanna point out...
Water quality, I'm sorry.
As far as E. coli, you know, we've basically gone to just a, more of a in-house monitoring, internal monitoring for E. coli. But since I had the data, I put them in the staff report just for your own benefit. And really, what it tells me, and it should hopefully tell everyone, is that when it rains, stuff comes down the hill, and at that point, the water quality tends to get pretty impaired, pretty quickly. It's a short-term thing. Typically, E. coli only lasts in a water body about 48 hours. So, anytime after a storm event, it's best to stay clear of storm drains, any kind of shorelines that are heavily developed, you know, that's gonna be, whether you're in the ocean, or in a bay, or in a lake, or a river, you know, give it 48 hours, frankly. And that's, that's pretty clear, again, in this rain event sample day where we had basically, you know, much of the lake, pretty, pretty high levels of E. coli, which, again, are an indicator of fecal contamination, you know. E. coli are monitored because they're easy to incubate and that sort of thing. It's, it's not necessarily what might get somebody sick, certainly can be, but it's an indicator that there's fecal contamination in the water sample. That's, I think, pretty much what I wanted to relay for water quality.
All right, Ava has a report for us, I believe, if we haven't, yeah, we haven't. Go ahead.
Yep. Post Labor Day, we have continued our water quality monitoring for E. coli, cyanobacteria, and physical parameters with a reduced frequency in sampling due to the end of the main recreational season. I attended a Lincoln City Chamber of Commerce meeting on September 23rd, where Paul was the guest speaker and spoke of the monitoring that we do, in addition to a brief 100-year history of Devil's Lake. We also spoke of current lake conditions and projects the district is currently involved with on KBC radio on the 16th. On, I attended a GIS symposium in Newport to better our knowledge of current technology and practices of mobile GIS. And this was put on by the Central Coast GIS Users Group. I've recently been working to ensure that our boating equipment and safety gear is up to date per the Oregon State Marine Board's requirements. We took a trip to England Marine Supply in Newport to replace expired materials that we had and to obtain other necessary items. For the past three weeks, I have been working with the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council on their newest hire, a educational outreach and field trip coordinator. We designed a water quality monitoring seminar and field trip to an area of wetland restoration based at Taft High School. The seminar portion entailed teaching high school juniors about the importance of and main components of water quality monitoring. The field session made use of a Verneer computer with probe attachments that the district awarded Taft High School through a grant this past spring. Parameters the students were able to measure included pH, conductivity, temperature, and soil moisture. This two-day event was a great success, and we received much positive feedback from both the students and Taft High School staff. The Save Our Shorelands program in-person contact is nearing, as I just discussed. We've been in contact with multiple nurseries for live plants, we've obtained seeds, packaging materials, and flyers, and the door hangers. Once live plants are delivered to us in the next week or two, we will begin distributing SOS program materials to lakes for property owners. That's all I got.
Great, thank you, Ava. Anybody have any comments or questions of Ava?
Nice job.
Thank you.
All right, Randy, what's going on with the life jacket kiosk?
I don't have an update, since it's only been three weeks, I'm still working on some stuff, so hopefully next meeting.
Okay. New business. First of all, I don't wanna forget the resolution regarding the transfer of funds.
Read that.
This is a proposed Resolution 2014-08, transfer to M&amp;S Materials and Services for Consulting. Whereas the district seeks to extend its current internship, be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District hereby transfer $6,900 from the General Fund debt service to the General Fund Materials and Services Consulting. So, I'll move that we approve this resolution as written...
Okay.
For the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes forward to, forward to nothing. I guess Kip wore it abstaining, but she knew that.
So, it's, yeah.
Oh. Randy, so you alluded to some new business that we might wanna discuss in relation to what Miles had to...
Miles awake, he awake? Okay, good deal. As Kip said, that Paul and Kip and I went down and down, we discussed a lot of possibilities, what we could come up with. Anyway, what I'm looking at is, I'd like to propose that we study an idea of changing how we impound water in the summertime in order to further our goals for water quality improvement. But just to make a clarification, this really doesn't have too much to do with water level in summer. So, this is more about how the lake flushes in the winter. So, anyway, the district has always impounded water between three and five months each summer. The rest of the time, the concrete foundation sits in the river and only serves as an impediment for sand and winter rains to move out through the winter, throughout the winter time. Most of the general public comments, I agree with, that the continual buildup of the sandbar on the east side or the lake side of the dam is a negative in a variety of ways. And we heard people speak against it tonight. While a gate system, as Miles has suggested a few times, and in a previous meeting too, and tonight, I believe it'd probably be too expensive and too complex, but I think we can come up with a simpler and a cheaper system for water impoundment during the summertime because we basically do not impound water through the winter. And the reason is, is because anytime in the old days when they first installed the dam and the fish structure before that, winter surges from the lake basically took out. out parts of the fence or, and/or dam later on. So my suggestion is that we remove the concrete foundation that's in the river. And so, instead, during the impoundment period, we're going to need a new type of dam. But instead of putting something in the lakebeds such as uprights or pilings to put a gate structure on, the reason that they went with a concrete structure back in the day was because they knew that the damage, really not much could take because some of the surges in the wintertime have a tremendous amount of log and debris and it basically just wipes out a lot of stuff. So, anyway, what I'd like to see is maybe if we can come up with something, instead of a gate or instead of a concrete foundation, but come up with something like as simple as just basic sandbags in the summertime. Because really, if you think about it, if you go down there, the foundation sits at eight point zero three feet above sea level. We've been retaining nine feet, our max impoundment's nine point five three feet, so we've been retaining twelve inches. Eighteen's the highest we could do. And that foundation actually sits lower than the sandbar up above it for approximately a hundred yards. So, the sandbar above is really what's controlling our water going out through the summertime. So, anyway, my suggestion is we remove the concrete foundation for summertimes and then we go to a simpler system of either using just regular sandbags. These sandbags can be had for as little as twenty-five to fifty cents each. We have an unlimited supply of sand right there in the river. We actually use sandbags today on our dam for sealing off water leaks on the current dam. It's basic, it's almost hokey, but it's, it's simple, it works. But it works and it's cheap and you can build it fairly quickly. More costly, but not a lot, but not whole lot, we could buy some of these new water-inflated flood control tubes. They're basically a tube that lays out like a pillow and you can get them in all different shapes and sizes. Some of these are, they've been using for coffer dams and lots of flood control projects. You can see them on YouTube. There is one vendor that actually has backed up twenty-one feet of water to work on a canal system. So-
What does it call the tubes?
They're flood control tubes or water-inflated tubes. There's one vendor I've been looking at, I mean, there's multiple vendors, you can look at all different ones, but there's one vendor called Aqua Dam, two words. And they actually sent me some pricing structure and I talked to the guy about it a little bit and he said, yeah, there are people that are doing exactly what we want, you know, on a small scale. And the nice thing about these tubes is they would be less labor, they would be a much faster install than doing sandbags, even though sandbags would be fairly quick. It takes, it takes our contractor quite a bit of time to install the dam too. So anyway, a thirty-six inch tall Aqua Dam runs about twenty-eight bucks a foot. I took my tape down to the, to the foundation and from dry land to dry land, we're running sixty-eight feet right now. So that's about nineteen hundred dollars. So a thirty-six inch tall one would be plenty since, at where we're at right now with the riverbed. The problem is, is we don't know, and this is where, the reason I wanted to bring this up is because I really think that we should have Paul look into seeing what it takes to get permits to, you know, we dig a trench out right in front of Kylos when it fills up full of sand for flood control and for, you know, keep the lake from flooding people's homes. Why can't we do that on the other side of the dam? Now, we're doing the same thing, we're working on flood control, we could just move sand, pile it over on the side like we do the west side, and get the water moving. Because once you get water moving, the more volume of water you get, the more it's going to take that sand out. So eventually, hopefully, we could get by without having to excavate all the sand and haul it away, which is the expensive part. Because I think we're only spending, what, four or five hundred bucks to dig a trench all the way to the beach. So if we spent maybe five hundred bucks each, each fall, right before the rainy season, and dug a trench all the way to the river, we're talking right at a hundred yards right now, I think that could really start pulling a lot of that sand out. So anyway, there, you know, there's, what I'd like to see maybe is if you guys would think this is something to look at, is maybe have Paul research either some of these water flood control tubes, or some sandbags, or even what else is out there that might even be better. One of the hurdles that we're going to come up against if we decide we want to do that is we're going to have to make some type of addendum or somehow change part of our water right to use a different type of water retention device because it's very explicit about the foundation and how many uprights and how many boards. But I think Water Resources Department, I don't see how that could really be too much of a problem because their really concern is the acreage foot that we're holding back and the height. So, I don't think it really would matter on their part how we're going to do it. So, anyway, but during that, during that, talking to Water Resource Department, I think it'd be good to research through the proper agencies, ODFW, DSL, State Parks possibly, whoever else, to see if we could dig that trench and see, you know, the first year, is this making a difference? Because we've talked about pulling or excavating some of that sand out of there, but it's, the problem is with the concrete foundation there, it just makes a catch basin. So when the strong swells blow up the river and go backwards and they deposit that sand, it doesn't want to go back. Like to see, it's kind of a two-part thing. I'd like to see us build a trench each year in order to get more and more sand out so we don't have to haul it away and spend fifty grand, you know, cleaning that all out. And then, if we could remove that concrete foundation and just put our summertime dam in at that point. So the positive effects of removing the concrete foundation, of course, it'd be, no longer be a catch basin. Less sand means more water flow out of the lake faster. Flushing or turnover of the lake would be increased. More flushing in the wintertime would be, mean more algae water out, and that would replace itself with fresher rainwater, which is lake turnover. And we know lake turnover has a positive effect on habs. So, all right, so faster water movement out of the lake in the wintertime will mean a lower overall lake level during the winter as lake levels should rise slower since it's going to be lower and fall faster as more volume moves through a system. This should reduce wintertime erosion that occurs higher up on the shoreline. We have tackled this problem at the nine-foot level, instead of nine-five-three, but we have done nothing about it in the wintertime so far. But I think that could be a big plus. Reducing the sandbar area would lessen the bird bath, bathroom problem that the sandbar encourages. Less bird bathroom means less bird droppings. This means a reduced E. coli in the river and on the beach. So, you know, because that sandbar affects not just our river and our lake, but it affects the kids playing out on the beach. A slower rising and faster falling lake during the winter means less flooding for low-lying homes and the roads back in the First Street Canal area. I've driven back in, back in there, when the water's a foot and a half high and I see cars going in and out and they, you're just washing off the bottom of the cars, so. Another good thing is with the river being totally natural for eight, nine months a year, this should be a big plus in the eyes of the environmentally minded public because a lot of people that I talk to in town think that that's an environmental issue as far as water quality and everything else. So, anyway. Anyway, that basically sums up my ideas. Like I say, this doesn't really have much to do with lake level in the summertime, you know, it's a hot issue. This is more dealing with what are we going to do? Can we open this thing up to let it flow naturally in the wintertime? And that concrete structure, people have voiced their opinion about it vocally, you know, I agree with them that it should go, but you know, we, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, I've been here since ninety and so, but there was just a fish structure then. But I don't know what the river, I was not here when the river had nothing in it. So, you know, that gives me pause about, you know, what we're going to do. So, having some type of water tube or sandbag, you know, easy to block up to a certain point, I think would be, I think there's so many good things about it that I think is something seriously that we ought to look at. So-
What about fish passage? Are you talking about this after June?
Well, no, you can, you can easily put in a weir with sandbags, even with the two water bags budded up to a weir. You can easily make a weir in between or set the weir off to the one side. So, you know, that would, and the nice thing about sandbags, even though they're kind of corny and there's basic, basic, is they, you can fit them really easy. And let's say that, you know, we have a drawdown effect come August and we're not getting to it, it's easy to pull out ten or fifteen bags and increase the water flow. It might be a little tougher with the water bags. And the other concern that, talked to Paul about this too, is, is the water bag is, you know, there's nobody watching this thing and so, you know, there is a concern of vandalism. They are repairable, but you know, you don't want to be passionate every three weeks, two weeks.
And would, would this be a nineteen hundred a year for the, for the tubes or?
No, they're reusable. Once you, once you pull them, you pump all the water back out and then roll them up.
So we basically have installation costs-
Yeah, I mean-
-no different than putting the waters in and out for the dam right now?
Right. I mean, you're going to talk some money, it's going to take, you know, there's going to be costs associated with removing concrete structure. You know, I don't know if there's permits that need pulled for that, but, you know, it's going to cost, you know, excavator in there to pull it out. So, but I encourage anybody to look at Aqua Dam on, on the web. They have a quite extensive website and it's, it's pretty interesting how they get stuff done. But even sandbags-
Do they look better than sandbags?
They would look a little bit better, yeah. So, the, basically, the way those are set up is, it's almost like a, you know, a three-foot tall one is like seven feet wide, so it's a large type pillow. But it forms to the bottom of the, of the river and you go all the way across. So, and you fill it from one side. The way you fill it, because when you put something like that all the way across the river, it just wants to float down, you, you unroll it as you're filling it. So you have two or three guys on the backside that just keep, as it fills up here, it fills up here, it keeps working its way up. So the weight, the way those flood control tubes work is if you fill them up only to the level of the surface of water, they're just neutral. But when you fill them up and they rise above the surface of the water by a foot, then you have all this massive weight pushing down on them. And that's how they seal lakes and riverbeds. So, you could use a combination of both if you wanted. So, like I say, we use them right now on our dam as it is, just to plug up lots of little cracks and crevices, so. Anyway, but that's an idea that might, you know, work with Miles. It's much cheaper, it's a much simpler way. And if it doesn't work as we want it, we could in a year or two, look at some other options.
Were you talking about a hundred yards further, you know, eastward than we do now?
No, put, place it in the same spot probably because we don't want to have to-
I'm talking about the trench.
The trench, yeah. It's approximately a hundred yards before it starts to drop off. Took a hundred fifty-foot tape and had to go twice to get to about two feet of water and it's starting to drop off at that point. Union fifty club, about twenty feet. Yeah, a little farther. So-
They're out to the river.
Well, if you dug from the Union Fifty, in front of the Union Fifty in the center of the lake, or follow the natural channel now and dug, dug all the way up to where the dam's at, I mean, we probably, I don't know if we could get permission with the Highway Department to be messing around underneath their dam, but the problem is that sandbar does this and then at the dam, it starts dropping elevation. So if we dig a trench to where the current dam is, I think you're going to see it flow and then take off. And it'll eventually eat all that sand away. I mean, is it three years ago, Paul, we had eight, nine feet of sand piled up next to Kylos? Is that four?
Probably. I don't know how many years, but yeah.
In the span of four days, it basically pulled that eight-foot sandbar which went, I don't know, eighty feet underneath Kylos and it pulled it and brought it right back down to the cobblestone riverbed from the water flushing so hard. So it, you know, I think if we were to do the trenching in the beginning of the winter before the rains hit, we could easily trench that eight or ten-foot trench and just pile the sand on the other side of the riverbed because it's, you know, seventy feet across and let that water start to flow. So, and if we have an issue, the lake starts getting even lower than we want, we can always sandbag a little bit if it starts cutting such a deep channel. You can always sandbag because I believe our water right allows us to impound, what is it, eight inches of water year-round? So, which should be eight-eight, eight-six or something, I don't know, somewhere around that point. So, you know, so if we do run into an issue, we can still sandbag or waterbag throughout the winter if all of a sudden the river decides to go down to six feet. I don't see it happening. I think this, I think this idea will work. I think it's going to take several years to really get that thing down because you've got that ocean fighting back against us all the time. So it's going to really depend on the high-water months of really flushing the lake hard. Anyway, that's my idea.
Well, I don't think I'm ready to act on this tonight. That's for sure.
No. What I'm asking is, is this something you guys think might be something to further investigate? And if so, you know, have Paul, I mean, we need to talk to Water Resource Department and a few other agencies if that's an option.
Well, I guess I look at it this way, you know, since the erosion study, people have brought up wintertime erosion. You know, we do have a lot of wintertime erosion. In the workshop in the spring, people talked about trying to generate more flushing activity in the winter. I think it's definitely, it's an interesting idea. I think it's probably the only way that we can reduce some of the, you know, potential flooding, some of the wintertime erosion, is to keep it down a little bit. I also think that it's important, if we're going to look at this, that we do have a public hearing and we do have good communications to the lakefront owners because if we do drop it in the winter to, to reduce erosion and flooding and increase flushing, then people need to know because we don't want people, you know, not being able to utilize or have their boat locked on a lip or, you know, sitting on the mud floor or whatever. But I think, I think it's something we could look at. I would suggest that if the board wanted to, that we would find a time to, you know, do some research, get some ideas to put forward to the board. Maybe the community has some other ideas or opinions that, that, you know, that could help this and, you know, have a, you know, do the research, have a hearing and make a decision on if we want to do something or if we can, based on the way the water right's structured, I don't know. I know that we've talked about, you know, people talked about cutting channels in the concrete structure, you know, in the April workshop or May or whenever it was, to do some of this. As long as, to me, I guess as long as we're able to execute the water right and not leave people completely high and dry, you know, it's an option to discuss and talk about.
Well, it seems to be, I mean, until tonight, so. Say, oh, that, that makes sense. Or, I mean, it's in that field. They saw the time they do. St. Helens erupted, it was on the river and prevent, you know. I have a tendency not to do, not to talk into the microphone, I'm sorry, but I, I just think they have the experts and they could, they could help us out tremendously within a short period of time. There wouldn't be any guessing. And so if we're, if we're thinking about going in that direction, I would say that that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for is just, you know, are you guys wanting to explore this option?
See what options are available and maybe that's the best one, maybe there are others. I know that, you know, Miles is- I know that, you know, Miles is putting in a gate, a, you know, more, you know, more in-depth structure. I don't know how well that will work, but...
How much had added, that many had added, had added support? I agree. Someone who has. They for a minute. Find it right.
Okay. So Paul, is that something you might be able to do?
Yeah, if it's so instructed, we can certainly, you know, if it's the board's will, we can put that forward. You know, I mean...
I would just like to interject that I think if we go forward with the RFP, that's our number one priority. This would be secondary to whatever we're heading for. So put your efforts into the RFP first, Paul, and finding out those leases and everything and then... But I'm not opposed to exploring this idea at all.
This would be like a follow-on act. Yeah, I would have done that, but thank you for making that clear because, yeah, that's just it. It's just a matter of finding time to investigate things. You know, I can tell you, you know, certainly you would need a permit for DSL to remove the concrete to dredge from, you know, east of the bridge. You mentioned ODOT and whether or not they'd let you even get underneath their structure there, you know. You know, currently our permit, the city's permit that we implement for dredging is, of course, just the west side, just that emergency flooding permit. It's not a maintenance flooding, it's not a maintenance dredging permit. It does require that the lake get dammed up, you know, and become non-flowing and there's a flooding concern. So it would be, you know, certainly those components. Water resources, you know, certainly worth the ask if they would allow a change in the methodology of the dam. I think your point's well received that if their concern is impoundment, volume and flow, then, you know, what do they care what we're using as long as it meets those requirements and meets fish passage requirements, you know, from fish standards. Certainly would want an engineer to kind of weigh in on this, be it an Army Corps of Engineers. I don't know if that, you know, those resources are available for us, but certainly could ask the question, you know. They've done two flooding studies on Devil's Lake. If you go back in time to 1970s, if you look online, you'll see two flooding studies that the Army Corps of Engineers did for Devil's Lake. Those could be a resource, at least. Just some ideas.
Yeah. So maybe more generally and as a secondary matter to the RFP for erosion, maybe what, you know, I think the goal here is to get the channel to... Is to stop holding back sand, to stop creating a sandbar, basically. And there might be other methods. I mean, we might keep an open mind to other possibilities. I mean, I think Randy's obviously thought about it a lot more than I have and, you know, this may be the best... If it's the best he's come up with, then I doubt that, well, there may not be anything better. But if that... If the goal is to flush sand during the winter and not allow buildup any time of year, then we might expand our thought process, our inquiry to that instead of, you know, this one particular method of doing it. Right, Randy? I mean, does that make any sense?
Yeah. I just see a tremendous amount of positives and that's what people keep bringing forward to us. And I think there's some simple ways of getting it done, some less costly ways of getting it done. We can try them. If they don't work, we can try some different options. Tell you what, Paul, I'll trade you. You work on that one and I'll take your purple loose stripe off your plate, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. Actually, sidebar, I talked to Eric Combs here a couple of weeks ago and he actually is the autinous that worked with Eliashem, former manager. And he jogged my memory and I vaguely can remember this, I'm not positive, but he said that the... They had roughly a close to an acre of purple loose stripe up near the marina on the other side in that wetland. Do you remember that area being bright purplish-red, purple flowers up there back in the 80s?
Yeah, I wasn't a lake user much. I just fished off a few docks, so...
Anyway, he said that's where the biggest concentration was at the time where they released a lot of beetles. And so, anyway, he gave me some suggestions about looking at the biggest concentrations. He said you're always going to have a little bit unless you go and actually spray. But the problem with purple loose stripe is it's... The seeds that they produce are like in the tens and thousands per plant, close to a million sometimes. And the seeds can last in the water for 20 months and then in the ground for up to, I think it was 18 or 19 or 20 years or something, they were saying, where they can reggerminate under the right conditions. And he said, "So you're never going to totally get rid of it." He goes, "What we do is we bring in our beetles and our larvae and our weevils and we put them in the most densely areas so they feed, they reproduce." And then the... Most of the weevils can fly approximately one to two miles. So he said, he was here about five years ago and they did a... They went around and did a kind of a light study and he said every patch, every small patch of purple loose stripe they saw had some leaf damage, which indicates there's weevils going after them. So he says, "Unless you're at that 10-plant and more," he says, "we normally don't, you know, have an issue with it." Because he said, "A lot of times the weevils, when they get to 8, 10, 20 plants, the weevils will find it and then they'll start reproducing and take care of it." He says, "If you got a patch with more than 10 plants," he goes, "Go check it out and see if they're, you know, leaf damaged. If not," he says, "Give me a call and in May we can get something going for you over there." So, you know, I thought he was very helpful about the whole thing. So, anyway, the two largest patches that I know of, I know the people that own the property, so I'm going to contact them and see if I can walk on their prop and take a look at it and I'll let you know.
Great, thanks.
Good trade?
Yeah.
Well done.
All right, thank you, Randy. All right, any other items for new business? Any non-agenda items? Don't ask me how that'd be different than new business, but any non-agenda items? Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? And again, we'll use the... Comments are limited to five minutes per person and we'll use the light system. Mark Christie.
Thanks. This will be really short. Mark Christie, I just wanted to take this opportunity. We've got a very important upcoming election in November and I'm really excited because I get an opportunity to vote here. So I wanted to congratulate Kip Ward because it appears he will be victorious in his run for a city council position. You got to get the one vote, but I'm pretty sure you're going to do it. So, anyway, congratulations. Hopefully you'll bring some great ideas and thoughts for businesses and I'm sure you'll still be involved in being an advocate for the lake. So we are excited about that. And also, though, I'm assuming too, be a process. I don't know when you would take your position, if it's in December or in January, but obviously that'll leave a vacancy on the board that I'm sure the board will address and work on going through a process again and filling. But I just wanted to take this opportunity and congratulate you, so...
Yep.
Mitch. Mitch Moore, please come forward, sir.
Just wanted to comment on Randy's new business and just a couple of thoughts that I had on that. One of them is just to make sure this is done as we look at it kind of in a holistic, complete process and not to take any action on the structure until you have, you know, the approvals of all the agencies. Because we know, I mean, Paul continually tells us that, you know, if a wall falls down, you're not going to rebuild it. And I'm assuming that, you know, DSL and all the other parties are going to have a lot to say in this process, so we want to make sure that we're not removing the dam and then finding out it can never be put back. A little... They're interesting ideas you had, but I would say, you know, Miles suggested, you know, professionally engineered structure, whatever it is, call it gate dam or whatever, and I would encourage that to be the case. I mean, this isn't the place to cut corners. And maybe the tubes are great that that can be used in it. My initial thought was all it would take is somebody to take a pencil and poke a hole in it and the lake would dump in two days in the middle of the summer and you'd have every person that lives around it in this building. So we want to watch that, but also to make sure that the fish are handled and all of that. So I'd encourage that if you're looking at that, first of all, we decide what it is we're trying to accomplish. Maybe some steps can be taken, you know, before, you know, more dramatic steps, like maybe we can dredge or do something like that and start a channel. And while we figure out what to do, the water right is very specific. I've gotten advice from several attorneys, whatever you do, don't mess with the water right, is what they'll say, because it is a very difficult area to go work in. We also have a couple of resources that we could bring here. We have one hydraulic engineer that lives in the city, not necessarily in our neighborhood, but he lives in the city and he's contacted Paul several times, so he may be a great resource. We've got also a coastal engineer when it comes to trying to, you know, provide advice on, you know, what might happen in the winter and are there things that can be done to mitigate that channel and make maybe less happen in the winter, so... So it's all great to talk about it, but please exercise caution and make sure we don't take any steps before we have all the approvals and all the permits. I'm sure there's a way to build a better dam out at the end of that lake. There's no doubt in my mind. So let's get the help we need and take a look at the project. Thanks.
Thank you, Mitch. Anybody else? Miles Schlesinger, sir, please come forward. You started all this.
Does anyone on the board know where the proper place to let little salmon go back into the lake? Is it on top of the dam or should it be at the eight-foot depth level? Where do fish really like to go so that we could get a good flow of salmon going back to their natural habitat because... For laying eggs. And I know that we put space for the fish to enter the lake from the ocean at the top of the boards that are put on, but that area used to be between six and eight feet deep as a natural riverbed and it was wetlands before that, before the bridge was placed in there. So could you answer my question as to where the best place for fish to go through? Do they like being on top of the water or do they like being down at the bottom of the stream?
They'd like flow. You know, faster water is where they're going to go, up, that's where they can find their way. And obviously they'll gravitate towards a little deeper water than shallow water if they have the opportunity, but right now it's pretty much shallow the whole time. And a lot of times we don't see the fish start running until we have a, you know, dam where the... They've excavated out and we have a huge flushing. They sense that fresh water coming out of the ocean and just start going like crazy up the river. And it's over and done with in a matter of days many times, but, you know, I mean...
I think, Miles, I think your question is, when the smolt return to the ocean, what are their optimum needs? Isn't that the question you have?
That's what...
Yeah. And so I'm not sure what that is. I'm not a fish biologist, but I think that was your question.
Well, I think that was one of the factors that we've pushed our installment of the dam off till June 15th over the last few years, is to help fish passage for the smolts to get out because they run through mid-July.
Yeah, but I'm not only interested in the smolts running out to the ocean, but the mature fish coming back in, where do they like to swim? And you're saying deeper is better?
Faster.
Faster, deeper waters, what they'll go in.
Okay. Because we could increase the amount of run to the natural habitat from the salmon going back to spawn if we had better lake access through the gate or the balloons or whatever you...
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, I agree that I think it'll be... For fish.
I'd just like to say, I think the tubes are a great idea, but I don't even know that the gate, the flood control gates, would be that expensive to build. I'd like to at least talk about that with someone from the Corps of Engineers if we're going to go to there as a second method of getting the lake back to a place where it can be used by the economy that generates most of the industry in Lincoln County.
Yeah, I think all ideas are on the table. Miles?
Thanks, Miles.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any comments? All right, any board comments or announcements?
So I'll remind people that time for this weekend?
I was practicing this morning. Pretty cool, really.
I had one comment for Paul. Paul, I don't know if it was an oversight or something, but I didn't receive an agenda or any of the documents before today's meeting. I saw... I saw the only note I got from you regarding today's meeting was the one to transfer money. So I didn't get any of the other...
So your name's not... You're on the board, DLWID, so you should get those through our listserv? Do you get the...
Most of the things I hope I get, I don't know, but I just know I didn't get today's agenda.
Yeah, so...
None of... None that was in the package.
We'll make sure your name is signed up... Well, you can do it tonight, frankly. You can just go online, you know, and anybody, obviously, too. But, you know, we want to make sure that there isn't something that's caught up. But when we send out the meeting announcement, all of the agenda items are linked and they're on the web.
Okay.
So if there is a hiccup, please go to the website, call me, whatever, you know, obviously...
Maybe I just didn't know where to look for it, that may be.
Do you use the web mail or do you...
I use whatever they've set up. That's the only one I get from here.
So you log in through a website?
Right.
So, you know, you should be on that listserv, but if not, we'll double-check that.
I thought it might be, it should be highlighted or something, you know, okay, to the agenda, but it may be buried somewhere that I just didn't know that I was supposed to get it that way. to get it that way. So I'll check on that.
Okay.
It's just in the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm not trying to exclude you.
No, I...
Not just looking for your money.
Okay.
But thank you for the comment.
Any other board comments or announcements? We're adjourned. Of course, you had hundreds.
You did fine, man.
Love me, man, I know.
Yeah, I'm right.
Thank you, my name.